Follow the Duval Committee of the whole workshop to order. We're set March fourth, twenty twenty five at five thirty P M. Are there any items that go with the order? Housewoman Apple.
Add two items. The first is I received a mail, well, everyone on council did, from Acres of Diamonds, looking to see if they could get a waiver on their permit fees and for the project that they're working on, which would add, I think it said, twenty six additional beds. And I started thinking about our housing targets, and there was one section of housing targets that I think were supportive housing, which is a specific type of housing that I believe the Acres of Diamonds project would be providing. So I know we can't just waive permit costs because, you know, it's a cost to all the residents, you know, it's it's a more of a reimbursement of cost. And so I was wondering if we could possibly look at using the Affordable Housing Sales Tax Fund to pay for those on their behalf. I think we have very few options to get that type of housing here in Duval and Acres of Diamonds has been, you know, a really good partner. And so anyway, I just wanted to get more information to find out if that was qualified and then find out, you know, if there was support to looking into that.
And that may be a question for Director Thomas in terms of a follow up. But she just came in the door, so.
Do you want me to give you the?
If you want, if you can.
So we do have the policy to develop a policy for how we use that fund. Teed up on the planning calendar, I believe it might be in the spring coming up. We'll need to do a fair amount of research and do legal review of this before we can give an answer. So for tonight, Miss A, let us take a look at it. It's a fairly complex problem. We want to make sure we do it right, or complex program. We want to make sure we do it right.
Okay, fantastic. I had a second, but I'll let, yeah.
Yes, same subject.
It's a different subject.
Oh, okay. Okay, mine's same subject as your first one, so I'll go ahead. Anyway, I think most of us are aware that Acres of Diamonds has been a wonderful addition to our city. They provide a great service. They they do eat, they do qualify. Any of their resident candidates, you know, they can't be on, you know, on alcohol or drugs and and I'm sure they do some kind of background check on them as well. But as a result, you know, I certainly haven't looked at the police record, but I I haven't heard of any issues with the residents there and would certainly like to do everything we can to to help them out. So if there is a possibility of at least waiving some of the fee fees, I'd be in favor of that as well.
Yeah, yeah, we'll by next meeting have an answer of what fees could be waived and we'll see if we can answer if we can use that fund, the Affordable Housing Sales Tax Fund. That might take a little more review, but certainly we can look and give you at least a list of what fees will apply amounts and hopefully getting get you an answer by next meeting.
And then, City Administrator indicated we put that on the council calendar can be moved forward based on the output of the research.
Director Thomas, is there anything you want to add to that?
I'm no, I've heard, I've heard enough. Okay. Previously, we did do a fee resolution for Acres of Diamonds a long time. They did permitting and we did some minimal waiving of fees, but it wasn't, it wasn't a ton.
You have a second? Yeah. The second one is just, it came up in a conversation with someone about how when we have meetings and we have a sign in sheet and we also have, you know, people who log on to the Zoom just to watch the meeting, just as, you know, part of the community. And it looks like it's become practice that if you sign in or if you log in, just as a viewer to a Zoom meeting, that your name is being input into the minutes. And I'm not a hundred percent sure of that. I mean, I don't remember doing that before, you know, a long time ago. And I just, I I worry a tiny bit that the form, when you come in, says, please underline, sign in even if you're not speaking. And it potentially makes people feel like there is a barrier to coming, that you have to put your name down and then you're, you know, written into the minute. And also, I don't think that the meeting is being livestreamed anymore necessarily. So if someone wants to just watch the meeting, they really have to, you know, they're basically on a list and 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 having to, in a way, it's a requirement of attending that you would have to disclose your attendance, if that makes sense. And I I believe it's a state law that says that there can, that is not, you can't require that someone provide their name or sign in, that can't be a requirement. And so I wonder if just inadvertently, we are giving the impression that you're required to sign in. And then in order to view the meeting live, it feels like you're required to disclose yourself because, like I said, you're being, you know, there's a huge list of, you know, anyone who signed in or anyone who viewed the Zoom, their name, their full name is being written in the minutes. And I I just, I worry that that could create a level of intimidation for people that might not want that. So anyway, if maybe there was a legal.
Yeah, City Administrator.
Okay. We've addressed this issue sometime in the last year regarding meeting attendance. But in terms of Zoom, you can put whatever name you want. It's a function of Zoom that you have to put in something to sign in. So you can put numbers, you have Mickey Mouse. We don't actually have to have your full legal name for you to sign into Zoom. You can write whatever you want. The Zoom platform does require you put something in, but the city doesn't require any official name. Likewise, people do not have to sign in in the front to come into a meeting. They can just come and observe and we've had multiple meetings of that. So there's no requirement that people sign in. They want to speak, they need to sign in, but they don't need to sign in to walk in and sit in the back.
Yeah, and that's reflected in, I was just checking our procedure document and that's yours, what's in here?
Yeah, I'm just concerned that it's not obvious that you don't need to sign in and most people. I don't know that I've seen in other cities that that people who are attending the meeting just in the audience didn't speak are being listed in the minute and creating a public document then that they're attending. Do I'm just, I don't think we have to do that. And I don't know that, I don't think we used to do that. And so I'm asking if maybe we would not do that. Because I I don't know that it's a requirement and it might make people feel uncomfortable.
That's it. If you want to add to that, I I don't know the legal requirements. I know some of the purposes to capture it for people speaking in the past, but maybe we change the language of the assignment if you're, if you want to speak, because that actually gives the clerk visibility in terms of who want, who may want to make public comment.
And thank you, Mayor, but then that's exactly it. If someone wants to speak, I mean, they can. I had someone write this royal mysteriousness at the last meeting. They don't have to use their name if they don't want to. They can use a name as long as we're able to call and they can show up. I mean, this is a practice that we've been doing for a while. So it hasn't been, as far as I'm aware, a serious concern before. So I mean, it's obviously up to council to change or instruct staff to change stuff. But as I mentioned, that has been the practice for a while. The minutes have had the names that people want to put in the signing sheet. And also, when we look at Zoom, like his royal mysteriousness or whatever it was, we didn't ask that person, go change your name and tell us exactly who you are. So that was not a, that was not a limitation for that person to want to listen as to wanting to, as to live streaming, we used to do it. Facebook changed the way we were able to livestream. So we're not, we're no longer able to livestream on Facebook. That is not something we changed. That is something that Facebook changed. So that might be something that might need to be changed in council procedures because we right now do not have the ability to do that. We have it on Zoom. Also, we provide enough information for residents who want to listen to council meetings, take a look in Zoom and log in through that way.
And City Administrator?
The only other thing I would add is the documents upfront, the sign in sheets are public documents. So anybody who puts their name on it, we retain them and anybody can ask for them. So if folks don't want to have their name on a public document, they shouldn't sign it.
I'm a rule follower. If I see a sign in big letters that's asking me to sign in, I'm assuming that I have to sign in. And so I think that that would be a typical response. So something as simple as making it clear that it is optional to sign in. I I just think that that would be the easiest way to make it clear because I don't, I would feel like I was lying to put a fake name. Like, it wouldn't occur to me that you would want to lie on a document. And so it does seem like there is an expectation that you would tell the truth and you're being asked to sign in. And so encouraging and saying, well, someone could just make up a name. I don't know. I just, I don't like the feeling. I think it should be clear on there that it's optional to sign in.
Just, I guess my quick thought would be if this is something council wants to take up and talk about, that we could put it on the calendar to talk about, just so we don't eat up too much more time here. But I mean, for me, I I can see where it can be taken either way, but saying, please, sign in doesn't indicate it's a requirement in my mind. I know for some people it may. You could always change it to, we appreciate you signing in, or, I mean, I've even been to Y M C A basketball games where people just blow right by the sign in sheet, you know, where you're supposed to sign in because there's kids there and all that. But if it was a requirement, maybe they'd have someone sitting there like they used to in prior years and you actually got funneled through that way. So anyways, I I don't really know one way or another if I feel like it needs to be changed, wordsmithed or whatever, but I I just feel that if council wants to talk about it, we should put it on the calendar to talk about it at some point.
Yeah, yeah. The only thing I would add to to that is, and and I didn't hear it in your remarks, so if you did state it, maybe I missed it, is like if we've had complaints about it. So so that's the other part is like, I also don't want us to be allocating time to solve a problem where there isn't really one. And we're not hearing from the constituents, but there may be a way to wordsmith it to or even just disclose the fact that, you know, if you sign in, it's going to be put in the minutes or something so that people then have have an option to do that. But we can definitely, I don't know. I know we don't have, the next meeting coming back is kind of full, but we can discuss it at the next sort of agenda planning to see if there's a slot. And in the meantime, it might be just moving on ourselves just to look at, you know, go up and look at the minutes for a couple other cities and sort of see how it's without sort of asking staff to take. The other item I wanted to just sort of add is with the decision we made around sort of the the new council applicant. We did discuss at the agenda, moving into April, we're already in March, so pushing the council retreat out. I think the only thing that may be a little more time sensitive that I wanted to check with City Administrator was regarding, I know there's some decisions we need to make around sort of funding initiatives that we were going to discuss in that. So if we maybe need to allocate some time in the cow to to do that separate note part, wanted to make sure that that was was addressed. And then I also had an ask, I think I mentioned last council meeting that we needed a volunteer to, I think, would just be enough but to relieve the ground applications. If there was anyone who would be willing to do that for, and I think there's a second in full, I recall.
So I'll do the last first. So the Economic Development Grant Group that reviewed applications last year was Councilmember McHenry, Councilmember Napland, Councilmember Schaefer. And then for the Human Services Grants, it was Councilmember Kufel, Councilmember Supple, Councilmember McHenry as well. So if folks are willing to re-up their their appointments to the subcommittees, that might be one way to do it.
Yeah, there's, I don't want to sort of force anyone into a box, but if folks are willing to to take that on, there is, there are time sensitive, so we need to sort of get this turned around. I'm not seeing any objections, so.
Okay, we will proceed.
Obviously, Councilmember Supple's not here, but invalidate, follow up with.
And then your first point, I mean, we saw if the thought process is that the any voter initiative would go on the November ballot, there is a little room, though, putting it off probably past, putting the retreat offer, you would have those really deep engaged conversations past Mayor June is getting a little tight. So certainly worth making it priority.
Right. Any other ones for the council? Anything? And so with that, we'll move on to the first discussion item, which is the permanent processing new state statutes. Big Florida Davis, senior planning, concluding that discussion.
Great. Well, thank you. Good evening, Council. Tonight, we wanted to basically bring back into your forefront consciousness the wonderful permit processing that we've update that we have going on. As we discussed previously, we had some state statutes that were passed in twenty twenty three and I think twenty twenty four and are starting to become effective right now. So next slide. So just to kind of point those dates, we initially talked about this back in September second. And then on November nineteenth, we kind of spearheaded the conversation around investing. Tonight, we're going to kind of shift the conversation back to similar to the conversation we had back in September. Talking about kind of the specific updates, so. By this. So the two bills, just to bring it to the forefront again, was fifty two ninety and twelve ninety three regarding equipment processing and design review. So permit processing is regulated under the Growth Management Act. The state has a number of statutes regarding timelines and deadlines and so forth. But every jurisdiction is to adhere to when they're processing land use entitlement permits. And so the ones we have here, the the forefront effect, permit processing designer. So Senate Bill fifty two ninety, which is specific to permit processing, became effective on January first of this year. So what that means is any application that comes in right now for land use entitlement will be subject to these new state statutes, even though we haven't gotten our our local ordinance updated yet. In terms of the bill that affects design review, that comes into vote back within six months of us updating our comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. So the implications, it's important, I just want to highlight here that subdivision review times don't change. So those will stay at ninety days for preliminary plat and thirty days for processing final plat. It's all the other land use entitlement application review times that will change. The standard is a hundred and twenty days, right, prior to January twenty fifth. But we're changing to three different review timeframes, sixty five days, one hundred days, one hundred and seventy days. And that's all related to the sophistication of the permit review type. So very simple permits to review sixty five days. Those are like boundary line adjustments. Someone comes in, they want to change the boundary line between two properties they own or between two neighbors. We got sixty five days. If it's a kind of a little bit more complex application where we've got to send out a notice of application, we get a hundred days to review that. And then our more complex reviews, like site plan reviews, you know, for like a new commercial development, those are going to get a hundred and seventy days. So that's actually the one good news out of all this is at least the review time is approving for site plan reviews. So what that basically means is from the day that we issue a notice of complete application to the day we give them a decision has to fall within that timeframe. So it doesn't, the clock doesn't start on the day of the application. It starts on the day that we say, hey, your application's complete, but we've got to get them a decision within those timeframes. We calculate days by calendar day as opposed to business day. This is not a new practice for us as a city, but it's just finally a state statute. I guess some jurisdictions out there were probably counting business days. So the state's like, put a kibosh on that. As I mentioned, the clock begins today, the application's complete. Our legislation also specifies which periods of time that we can review, we can exclude from that review clock. We do that already per local ordinance, but state statute is, well, now it's codified in state statute. Next slide, please. Yes, so additional implications of this. So and we'll, we'll have more conversations with Beth over in finance. But it does impact how we we collect fees. So there's a couple of different methods to go about it. A, we can either collect eighty percent of what we would charge upfront, or we can collect a hundred percent and then refund the difference later if we don't meet deadlines. So assuming we go the method of collecting eighty percent to begin with. What that would mean is we would have to issue a decision in those timeframes in order to get one hundred percent of the fee. So if we give them a decision within a lot of timeframe, they'd owe us another twenty percent. Or the rem, I should say, the remaining twenty percent. If we don't meet that timeline, then it depends on how far off we are as to how much more we can collect. So for example, I I use the one hundred day limit because that's easy numbers. If we issue a decision after the one hundred days, but no later than day one nineteen, we can collect that ten percent of twenty percent that's remaining. If we're on day one twenty, giving them a decision, we can't collect any of that remaining balance. So that will definitely have an impact on on permitting. Again, it's more impetus on the city to get permits reviewed and processed. And that's the whole impetus of of this legislation is to get jurisdictions moving, getting permits processed in a more timely manner. There is an opportunity, again, if an applicant in the city can come to an agreement on extending that timeline. We have that provision right now in our code, but it's codified now in state statute. But, you know, we can sit an applicant and say, hey, we might not be that deadline. Can we extend that to X and X date? And next slide, please. Yeah, so the implication for for design review, and we'll actually kind of talk more about this bill when it comes to updating our design guidelines. But in terms of permit processing, what this bill does is it limits us to one meeting for design review. Typically, as a city, we can do our design reviews in one meeting, but that's not always the case. You know, we had, for example, Sherlock Storage, they went through a couple, I think, at least two meetings, I think, for that one. And I think they made their recommendation on the third, you know, their third meeting. So that can happen. But again, now we're really set to saying, oh, jeez, we better get things right. And everyone meets up with more pressure on on staff and our planning commission to to get things right. And next slide, please. So what's kind of the status of the codes to to throw you in? We are doing in-house, of course, our attorney review is just wrapping up, which is awesome. Next slide. So once we get our attorney review kind of wrapped up and we we get a solid first draft, we'll send that for internal review with our development, sorry, Development Review Committee. So that's Public Works, Building, Fire. And just make sure that each department has an opportunity to look at this and put their eyes on it. It's important to have multiple eyes, but having the right eyes so that by the time we bring a draft to planning commission and city council, it's a pretty solid document and we can utilize you guys to help us tweak things and and things squared away. How do you want them before final adoption? So I believe that is the end of my presentation. So I just, there's questions?
Hi, me being for the record, Laura Thomas, Community Development. I wanted to add just a couple other little pieces. It's kind of minutia, but just so you know, we have twenty eight days to review an application and deem it complete. And that time clock for, say, if it was a hundred days, doesn't start until it's complete. So then we get to start the clock then. And when an application comes in now, we were, right now, we were able to do what called polling it, which is like keeping the clock stopped for fourteen days for us to review and make sure they had addressed all of our comments from that previous reason. So that's going to go away. And then we have the complexity of like notice of application is fourteen days, and then we have to do C F A and that's twenty one days. And by our our existing policy, we have to give our hearing examiner, I believe it's close to thirty days to render a decision. So this is going to be challenging for us. So we're going to have to be hopefully working more with an applicant in pre-application to try and get it better fleshed out so that we maybe only have like two reviews, like the first one and then one more, and then we're off and running to planning commission.
Sure. Housewoman, bring up with.
Yeah. So would an option, if you get to a point where it's kind of a sticky point and you're reviewing it and there's an issue, would the the scenario be where an applicant might give you some leeway and an extension if you said, well, we're either going to reject it or and you have to start over again, or you know, we're going to need more time. Do you see what I mean? Like, because I could see that now if we don't have flexibility and timeline, you would just be like, oh, there's a problem here, reject. And then you start over again. Do you know what I mean? Could you just reiteratively reject, reject?
No, but what we, what we do do is we do, we like, we stop the clock and we give them comments. And then it comes back in. If there are issues with the clock, what we would do is we would say we need some, and an extended period of time, we're asking you to agree with that. It'll be interesting to see if they do because they're going to, like, they're going to give up their money on the, on the.
Yeah, it seems like there'd be no incentive.
But what, but what we're starting to see cities that are already, like, there aren't a lot of communities actually that have the policy done, but they're having to implement it. And so are we now with new application is they just essentially send an email and say, there are still these issues. We are going to take you to hearing with a recommendation in denial. Definitely not, you know, what we want to do. We've never done that in, you know, twenty four years that I've been here. So it'll, you know, we'll have to see how it goes once it's implemented. But historically, developers have given us a little bit of extra time.
Housewoman, we're Henry.
So you spoke to this a little bit broadly. I was just curious, we've given staff workloads currently. I mean, how far off are we now from being able to meet this? I know I I, if you can answer that broadly, but slightly more specifically, I mean, I know you said it would be challenging. And then also, my follow up would just be, are there certain kinds of permits that are more challenging to meet than others currently that you can see being more of a problem within the timelines that are projected here?
I think, you know, when you have a large project that might have a couple hundred units and mixed use, like, that's going to, that's going to be really difficult and we're going to need more time. But if we have like a subdivision that, you know, twenty, thirty, forty units, we could probably get that processed in time, but we don't, you know, we're, we don't often meet our existing timelines now. We're really close, but we always request the extension hits. And a lot of it is because so much of the clock is eaten up in comment period where the clock's still rolling. And we can't stop it when we're in comment period.
And probably for the 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 period two, we'll get to a point where we're like, okay, we're ready to put together everything for the hearing. That portion burns up a huge clock too, because we've essentially gotten to a point where we've said, hey, your reviews, your, your application's pretty good. But now it takes us, you know, X amount of time to prepare all the hearing documents in the packet and get it to the hearing examiner seven days ahead of the hearing, having the hearing and then the hearing examiner having twenty one days to issue decision. It just, there's a whole lot that's just eaten up. That's not really review time, I would say.
I would say the legislature did not fix the issue with all the comment days that roll into the amount of days that we're allowed to review a permit.
Your questions, Councilwoman Schaefer?
There's similar question. You, you know, I know you're still on the assessment. We're trying to assess what in fact this has, but just, you know, what what you know now, what do you think it's going to do to our staffing? We're going to have to add a staff member just to handle this, or can we hopefully absorb it? Or what are you guys thinking?
There, there's not a plan to add a staff member.
Yeah.
Where I would say if we looked at the money, we'd be better off giving the twenty percent or the ten percent financially. I mean, it's not exactly what we'd want to do. And we won't really know until we're rolling through the new policy and even really now, since we have a couple of projects in and we're trying, like, the other thing it does that puts pressure on all the other departments, not just planning, but public works and building. The other thing it does that puts pressure on all the other departments, not just planning, but public works and building. Because now if we have, you know, a fairly significant project come in, we're, you know, usually we would take, you know. Three to four weeks to review a first time. And now we might have to do like ten, ten to fourteen days.
Yeah.
Which could be really challenging because then you're gonna push other things aside. So we're just gonna have to see and balance how that's gonna go. And then maybe we'll have to go back, you know, and talk to legislature and say this really isn't working and these are the reasons why. And ask them to maybe at least take out the time period where we're in like a public comment, at least.
I don't know, this is a big hypothetical. What are the odds that if, just say, we had like a two hundred unit thing come in and we have all these deadlines? And we don't get it completed in time, what are the legal ramifications for us, like Clay Allen, that, you know? Uh was due in bankruptcy? I mean, because they didn't.
I would say that's maybe an apple and orange, um because that was a development agreement and they didn't implement the development agreement. This is a little bit different, so the only punitive thing that we'll have to do is give them money back.
And that was actually, you you addressed one of my first questions, which is around um. You know, if there's missing information or follow-up or review comments, I think you addressed that one. I I wanted to sort of pivot a little bit. I I know the eighty percent, you know, which I saw the in in terms of max collection. I I think Troy, you mentioned being able to take a hundred percent refund. When I read it the other way, it was really around the eighty percent. And I was just curious, you know, do we ever have situations, obviously, if we miss our deadline, that that's the penalty, it's sort of baked in. Do we get um e- ever have, you know, developers where we reject their application and there's exposure because we didn't collect the twenty percent and they just don't pay it? Uh you know, I was just curious, the other, the other side.
So that's the issue. When we come back with our recommendation, we're gonna recommend collecting all hundred percent and then giving back like. The twenty or the ten. So we don't have to chase somebody, right, to get the final payment back in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one more, and it gets off a a little bit. I know we're focused on what, you know, is happening, but I was curious. Was it something that was talked about at all when like shortening comment periods? And how long the hearing examiner, did they just completely miss it and not think about that? Or did it come up and they just kind of, you know, decided to transfer?
So here's the answer. So I sit with A W C and the Planning Directors Group. And we did provide those comments when that legislation was going through. Um it it was really tough, like, there were so many changes to that, that I think at the end of the day, we were like, okay, we got most of what we wanted. And so that's not at the same, yeah, that makes sense.
There's no other questions. Uh we'll move on to the second discussion item, which is agreement with Eastside Transportation Partnership.
Uh good evening again, Mayor and Council, Laura Thomas for the record. I have just a really short presentation. But you'll also see in your packet under the consent item, the materials, there's an agenda bill. There is the agreement, both a clean version and I'll say. And then just some kind of general information that I pulled from the website as well. Cause I am fairly new to the uh partnership. So anyway, I'll, I can start, I have most of it in my mind. And so uh E T P, Eastside Transportation Partnership began in nineteen eighty seven. Um and it's really a group of most cities within King County, really except for Seattle. We are within the Snoqualmie Valley Small Cities Group, so that would be all the Valley Cities. Um you do have voting rights within this group and we do have, uh Councilmember Napoli is our representative for the city. And we have two votes within that group. Um most of the cities have obviously a full vote, but our little valley gets two. So I'm like two out of four, that's pretty good. Um so you'll see, oh, thank you, John. So you'll see there is the map of the partnership, so you can see it's um it encompasses the entire county, uh entire county. Next slide. Maybe, there we go. Uh we do have an inner local agreement, it's twenty two cities, that was the thing I couldn't remember what I was doing. Um the current agreement expires at the end of twenty twenty five. You might have, why are we here so early? Because it has to go through the county as well and they have a different lineup than we do. And so they wanted to get this done before they go into budget season in June, which is why we're asking for approval. But it actually won't get uh executed until probably June of this year. Uh they meet the second Friday of the month. Uh it has been pretty much virtual since the pandemic. But they are going to, one quarter of the meetings are gonna be in person. So next month, actually now this month's meeting is gonna be in person in Redmond. So they're gonna, they're gonna do that. From what I have been told, it'll be like. Redmond, Bellevue will be kind of the points where we might have to go if we attend that meeting. There are some goals of E T P, essentially it's regional coordination and advocacy. That's really what that uh. Group and coalition is about. They do have a legislative agenda, so I provided that as well. Um I think for the most part, it's really about the move ahead Washington had the group in twenty twenty two of the state legislature. Um they had a really nice letter that went off in December, you know, talking about preservation and maintenance. And continuing the funding of the projects. Uh let's see, we're talking about that. There are really just minor changes to the agreement. Uh so section two one is basically the addition of letters for uh transportation projects and the deletion of input. I mean, it was really just wordsmithing, quite honestly. Uh we do pay technically a hundred dollars a year double long to the organization. Uh it looks like after my conversation with them last week, they have about eleven thousand dollars in the bank. And that's used for rentals of rooms and for food for the meetings. And so it sounds like they're gonna have plenty of money and not collect, at least for a handful of years. Next slide. So uh next steps really is to take questions and on your consent.
That's a question, just more more comment. To your point, I, you know, other than a little bit of wordsmithing, it looked like a lot of it was actually just moving the order of some paragraphs. Like from the from the body to the top, so it was not a lot of material changes. Uh um but uh, are there any other questions?
No, I I'm just, I'm just curious, and certainly with the, you know, the low cost and and the. The the uh, you know, folks like Jennifer who contribute their time to this, I I have no problem in contributing. Uh the uh, the membership. Uh I am curious, so what 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 do you guys think are are the benefits specifically to Duval? Or to the Valley, the Valley membership?
Do you want me to speak? Um so when we do our legislative agenda, um. One thing about this meeting is it's pretty heavy on a focus kind of in the core of the east side, you know, the four oh five corridor. And so every once in a while, you get a little bit of a chance to add something to the legislative agenda, just to remind people about the Snoqualmie Valley. Hey, we're out here, you know, we have rural roads that connect us and we're being built as urban centers and, you know, so um. Just the reminder that the cities in the valley exist.
Yeah.
And um it matters because the people um that live in the more interior areas, they come out here to recreate. They, you know, it impacts them. And so that would be one way. We also get updates on information. From uh transit, large projects that would impact our commutes, things like that. But definitely the metro connection and just understanding how um routes might be altered. Or um especially with the um the light rail. Kind of, they've had a lot of date changes on that. And so just being able to stay abreast to, you know, when those.
True.
Those things will be open, because once they open, the idea is that we will have. Um kind of a little bit of a change of our route to get buses to bring us in. To uh the light rail, so I don't know if that helps.
It does, it does.
Yeah, but it definitely is more four oh five corridor focus, I would say.
Yeah, and and that's, that's really why, why I asked. My, not, not, not with this necessarily, but in general, I'm always concerned that that organizations like the uh, the A W C. And the S C A and those tend to be focused on the big city suburb uh issues. And with little or benefit for uh, you know, for us here in Duval. But this doesn't sound that way, and certainly, like I said, that as long as you feel it's uh. A good, good way to spend your time and and think it helps out, I'm, I'm fine with it.
And I, it is this sort of way, and I, you know, again, very little expense, it's primarily time. I think it's also good, you know, to have the bigger picture of the region, you know, in terms of where our money's going to those questions. Because those investments impact other projects that we want to ask for, so that's part of the policy. And and I think we obviously do have people that live here and commute and work on the east side uh and or Seattle. So, you know, having visibility and someone who can sort of talk to those issues and questions would make this one some good stuff. So do you need anything other than sort of a straw move, like?
Nope, we don't even need that. It's on your, it's on your technical agenda consent. Thank you.
And uh bring this to the last uh discussion item this evening, the Big Rock Park Grant Opportunity with Director Roman Sherkiv.
Uh good evening, Mayor, Public Mayor and Council, uh staff and citizens, Steve Lashewski, Public Works. Uh there's a few grant opportunities popping up and. D A McNamara talking about these and we figure we should probably bring them forward, let you know what's going on so we're good on the same page. So uh if you didn't get to read them out of the first note version, right, we're in design um funded and contracted. Do you have a thousand, a hundred thousand dollar grant or any of that in sports? Um. The current estimate, pre-designed, the the pre-designed stuff, was around a million dollars depending on the Allin Heart kind of stuff. Um with that said, there's opportunities that we were reached out to specifically on some. I guess kind of leftovers through an R C O special grant round. Um that's listed as item two, and you notice why it started number one, but it started with two. Um so one point two million dollar ask, there's not a huge bucket, but. You can request up to one point two million. Um the normal. R C O grant round will be in May next year. Those are three-year cycles, two or three-year cycles, I believe. Uh. So that would be, I guess, feedback number two. We have to use the grant in a four-year period on the one point two million dollar grant, I'm calling it. So the R C O special round. Uh standard grant cycle, the two-year cycle, and it's next year um. I, I think we have a higher chance this year than next year, but I think it's either or, honestly. Um I doubt we get two in a row from R C O. We have not received a grant from our field in a very long time, so that is beneficial to us. Um so that's kind of. The short street of R C O, I've been on the second page, I made some notes on King County Parks Levy. Um that is open now, those are two marks straight first. Um one million. They changed it, that was right when this was. Uh but it is April third now, that's Friday. I think they realized the Monday signal probably less than exciting for everybody. So it's a Friday signal on the King County Parks Levy. That's a million dollar max um. And we have been awarded a million, a hundred thousand for design. I think we're reasonably competitive, but on the lower end, um a lot of the. Levy grant dollars have a lot of uh actionable items, like gap for part of the points. Uh intercity, low income, things that are not gonna. Forgot, not even scored it, so. Um I think we're normal, that is a normal grant we do after, and then King County Sports, I didn't put it on here. They have their regular grant round, which is due May fifth. Uh that is only a quarter of million for development. Destruction, so. That's something, if not nothing. And then it did put the notes in this on, currently, we are in the borrowing. I don't know if everybody realizes it, but we have a levy for the current destruction that was built in twenty seventeen. So that is due, we confirm, to be paid this uh end of the year, twenty twenty five. So the portion of that note is for the ball field is over. So moving forward, we have opportunities to levy again, kind of like you see the schools do with the sunsetting levy and just kind of re-up it, keep it the same, change it, whatever. You know, the council wants to do, but those are the realities of funding. I don't expect a windfall of parks uh impacting these, they align share this, we are going to need grants and we're going to need our own money. And it looks to me like our own money will borrow money on the levy, so. But then this, this may happen.
Um I think that covers it. Uh we do need at least a kind of thought or consensus tonight on the R C O grant. The deadline for the R C O grant is March thirteenth, so we will have to turn around that grant implication very quickly.
Councilwoman Penoffson?
Yeah, I mean, just thinking about this, I I really feel like this might be the type of project we have to phase. Um that's a lot of money to come up with all at once. And I, one thing to point out is when our financial plan looked at renewing the existing levy, they were looking at. It appeared like using that money for operations and the levy that we have out there currently is, you know, was primarily. To pay down for the capital, um the debt. And so if we're instead, you know, as the um consultant said, oh, you know, renew the levy at this much. And there was only a net cost of a smaller amount because this one would be sunsetting. And the idea would be to, it looked like allocate all of that operational. Um so I think we really need to contemplate that if we're going out for a levy for capital. Thinking it'd be replacing what we have, then the levy for operations would be the whole thing. You would have like an offset, if that makes sense, of an expiring capital levy. Anyway, I hope that makes sense. But um so I think we really need to tie that into our operational cost um strategy. If we want to use the, because there's only so much bandwidth for people to say, yeah, to property tax increases. Um I also am curious, did you uh look at the community partnerships and grants? Cause that has some pretty big dollar amounts in the past. Yeah, it's the C P G, it's um, we had looked into it before and it um. Often, I I'm trying to think of the parks that have used it. Can't remember if that was a C P G, I want to say like Petrovisky or. I can't remember. Anyway, I, there's a whole bunch of information, if you Google it right now, you'll find it. Um often how it works is there'll be a piece of property, potentially King County might own it. And uh groups will say, we want to develop it, we want to raise money, they'll form a partnership. Sometimes it's with a city, sometimes with its parks district, sometimes it's with a little league or a soccer club. Anyway, large dollar amounts have been given out on this grant. And I really, and when we had approached them many years ago, uh they seemed extremely interested. And I I think there is an awareness that if you look at the map of King County Parks. We are way up here and the only park we have is Duval Park, which is on two oh three, which you can't even hardly call it a park. There's, it's a marshy field that you used to be able to play baseball on, but you. And some soccer, but it's just in complete disrepair. So that is our offering from King County, which is basically nothing. And there have been talks again and again and again that there's really an uh. Inequity compared to, you know, Marymore, there's Holt McDonald serves carnation, you have the Redmond Ridge. I mean, those are all King County parks. We don't have anything that serves us here in Duval and we are growing. And so what happens is all the unincorporated areas of Duval feed in and use our park. Because there isn't a King County park that has um, you know, good recreation really at all. And so at one time, there was um, you know, pretty big awareness that we had a deficit. And King County was happy to talk with us about doing one of these community partnerships and grants, even giving us money to purchase land, which is. even giving us money to purchase land, which is, um, kind of, I, I think that the C P G grant might have been how the city got that initial fifty thousand to do the feasibility study. I can't remember if it was C P G or directly, just a direct from.
Twenty-five thousand for U Sports.
It was twenty-five. Okay. I couldn't remember where it came from, but when that whole thing was being discussed, um, there were talks with the people who run the C P G grant and they were very interested. Um, the other thing that I would like to just, you know, maybe propose is I feel like City of Duval should be at the table when we look at the levy just in general. We are underserved here. And when you look at the levy, you know, there's different projects that happen that aren't just grant projects. Not just, we're going to put grant money in a pot, pot. If there's underserved areas, we're actually going to, you know, do some improvements or do different things. And I, I really feel like Duval should be at the table saying as part of this grant, we need money because our residents are paying in King County parks and we are not being served. So I don't know. I feel very strongly about it and I felt strongly about it for many, many years and expanding Big Rock Ballpark. I can guarantee you that probably way more than half the people using that park will not live in Duval. They will be coming from the unincorporated King County areas and using it. And so, anyway. I kind of went on a long tangent about that because I feel very strongly.
Are there any questions? Yes, Steve.
So the, uh, I think it was last meeting, we had a discussion on, uh, parking habits. Uh, fairly long discussion and there was some hesitancy on, uh, on our part to maximize that out. Uh, I still don't understand that hesitancy. Uh, it sounds to me like the worst thing can happen is we're unable to use it all and we have to pay it back. Uh, that's not a horrible thing. Uh, certainly it, it wouldn't, I, I don't know how much of a depth it would make in Big Rock, you know, Ballfield, but if it is, assuming it is for capital, uh, development, I still see absolutely no reason we would not maximize that out, uh, going forward. I don't know. When, when do we take a vote on that? Do, do you know?
I think the program obviously about the next meeting and then we have to have a hearing and then action.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm going to continue to push to maximize it up and use it to the best of our abilities. I understand we may not have staffing to, to use it all, but on the other hand, with the, uh, capital cost of, uh, developing Big Rock, maybe give it up. Uh, so, uh, I think fellow council members, those that are here, please take note that, uh, that's not a bad thing to, uh, try to take advantage of what we can get from, uh, from our developers.
There are comments, questions?
Uh, sorry, yeah, no problem. A quick follow-up on phasing. Just being upfront, like if you're going to phase it right, you're probably putting in the parking loop for attention. Very, um, fulfilling. So just agree, I saw like right now the proposal, right, has a, a combo field in the back. It does fall to recur field three, so that can become seasonally usable all year round. Um, and then you're going to have small pieces of parks on track, uh, and maybe a bike course we're looking at. You've got some volleyball, you've got pickleball, you've got shelters. So there are plenty of pieces to add, like, you know, plug in the Legos and go S phasing, uh, which, but the, the bulk of that, the, the caution, I'm going to say on phasing the large land development. Let's say we don't put a field in, but with the, the parking in, we're building stormwater for the facilities that we're building, if they go underground first. Rules can change and we're not locked into rules. This, once you build, you don't pass, right? So, or once you, once you build, you test. When rules change, when you're done, you have to then augment. So just some caution, I think phasing is fine. Like I said, it's, it's, it's going to have things we're, we're not going to have now. You know, we're parking them. Is that a bad thing? No. Um, but it's not very fun. It's still a whole lot. So.
I don't know if you.
I, I, I guess what I would ask, um, Director Landeshevsky is, is there any downside to going out for that R C O grant right now? Cause we may be more competitive now on that one. But still keeping our options open for all the other levy grant programs that are available.
Just the acceleration of the rest of it in funding or funding, you know, that's, that's pressure, that's fine. Uh, worst case, you can, you know, give it back sooner than later. You go all the way to the very end because then you're looked at very, very poorly. Um, but you know, you have to, you do have to try. So that's, that is a start.
I guess the math is a little different. Can we spend one point five million dollars in the next four years by phasing this project?
I mean, you could probably return to field three and get some smaller things, but yeah, you're not going to last grade at ten acres and, and put it apart. Cause the turf assault is going to gash you, you know, probably six figures.
From Boon, the camera?
Similar question, um, that I was thinking of basically, is there, you know, pros, cons to just going for whatever we can, you know, or was there any thought staff had as to strategy of we should go for this one, maybe not this one? Um, and then linked to that as well, I know, for example, King County Council will have some leftover budget and then they kind of need to know who needs what, just so that when the time comes, they can advocate and try and grab a chunk of it. And I know that happened, uh, relatively not too long from now. So I don't know if there's anything with this project that we could push for and let our council member know. Um.
Well, and so in the C A report, I do kind of want to put a pin on that. Maybe we come back to it because one of the King County levy, um, parks levy dollars that we've, I think, kind of tacitly committed to going after is the capital one for the mountain bike group. And so we have that there, which will, I think, require some amount of, um, council member Perry's support. That doesn't mean it's the stuff that's attached to either her grant program or unused monies. But we have a couple of things that are in development at the same time that, um, we just want to be mindful of kind of all this stacking that's happening and making sure we're, we're competitive and telling a good story without seeming like we're just throwing spaghetti at the wall.
Can you hear a quick follow-up?
Uh, sure.
Just, um, on that, so I just wanted to follow up if there was a specific, you know, thought from staff about which of these we should potentially go for. Cause I mean, I would support going for any that you think are like, even if it's a low likelihood, I think sometimes it can be good to get our story out there and, and get us on the board. But on the flip side, you know, you can overdo it too and seem like you're just really trying to go for anything. Um, and then I agree to be mindful of, I know there are a lot of different, very little overlap with some of the big projects we have coming, but it's still the same staff working on things or, you know, and so how do we prioritize that? And in terms of phasing to the last comment, I'll add, I, yeah, I, you know, it's just really tough because it's a huge chunk of money and especially with other kind of competing projects that will need similar resources. It's, it's hard to know. And I, I don't know what phasing in that project would look like. I always hate, I know everyone would love to see the parking going immediately and I don't disagree at all, but anytime you put in something finished, then you're going to have to put heavy equipment through there and potentially ding things up to do the other parts of the park. So I, I don't know. It's, that's a really tough one.
That'll be hard to, because you, you're going to be required to do frontage and, but you know, and I've got to go first.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, I, I'm curious on the quick round of R C O, right? It's one point two max. Maybe it's got a higher likelihood of, of again, waiting and we'll still go do the next round in twenty twenty-six, but since it is so fast and it was kind of an extra round, maybe there are not folks capable of submitting, maybe that likelihood is like that. Um.
Yeah. And, and that was going to be my sort of only comments. He touched on the league thing. So he sort of beat me to that question. Um. The King County stuff was interesting, uh, that, that you brought up, you know, because we talked about doing the swap. But also, you know, if there's a way to turn that two ballpark back to the county and sort of get a credit to invest in, in Big Rock, that would be an interesting pick for, I don't know if that's feasible. Um, and then my, my, but I would be in sort of, the four year seems like that's a little bit of play. It's not like it has to be used in a year and a half or two years. I know four years goes by fast, but at least it's some money in the, in the bank and it, at worst case, you put it into some of these smaller projects. Best case, you get some other funding in the interim and you can combine that. Um. This was more a question for the city administrator. Maybe this is what you're talking about in your that report, but I know the lobbyists had also sort of brought up some grant funding. Is, was that covered in these three proposals or is that separated apart? Cause that was partly related to.
So the R C O grant actually was brought to us by our lobbyists.
So I just wanted to connect the dots.
Yeah. And then, you know, I'll be curious to see what federal opportunities we have, but parks, the, the thought process initially was that there would be more opportunities for parks at the state level or the county level than there would be for federal funding. But it's still, I mean, it's part of our legislative agenda. It's still under the radar to see what federal dollars there might be for expansion of the park. But right now we have not identified any federal fund to go out for, for Big Rock.
So just for the, and I'll let you away in your comment, but it sounds like, um, there was sort of an ask for a general consensus if, if there was a within the council moving forward with at least that first grant, because of, um, council.
Well, that, that was my, that was my question. Thanks. Uh, you know, I, I, I think it was Inc. That said, you know, I, I'd certainly be in favor of going after any or all of these, depending on what, you know, staff availability is. Uh, I don't see you know, any downside other than the staff time for going, uh, going out.
Hands there, everyone sort of, is that consensus?
But I see, we currently do have a property tax levy, right? That's one thing. There is other, other debt to assume bonded debt, which we could earmark and pay back with, you know, these, right? Like there's a way to strategize, um, if we do have a, a shortfall, then it'd be nice to know if our shortfall is three million or five or two, right? They're going to make grant fee, we may round it, definitely. Yeah. So. I think there is some time now we'll cushion, but we're all sort of, yeah, I'm going to get a dollar for all of the dollars, right? So.
That's one good answer.
Yeah. How could we engage in a broader conversation with King County of our area being underserved and perhaps you're marking money directly from the levy to say this area is underserved, we.
We'll call them C P G group tomorrow, but that's an easy one. As far as that question, I don't know if that's within our wheelhouse or that's more elected to elected.
Um, so the.
The administrator.
The King County Parks Levy is up for ballot, um, uh, measure for the August ballot. Um, it seems to me that we would have a good opportunity as part of their advocacy. I mean, presumably they want all the votes it can on the King County. Um, levy is to ask for representatives from King County to come to a city council meeting to talk to us about, um, uh, that levy. So we have a good opportunity because they want votes on, for the August ballot. So I can certainly take that. We have had the opportunity, I think, it was during council member Perry's town hall. She brought somebody from the parks program. Um, to the most recent town hall. I, I think that was my meeting, um, that I attended where they spoke. And afterwards I said, well, for Duval, for the purposes of getting the votes from Duval residents, if the only thing that you are highlighting is the swampy mess on two oh three, it's not very attractive. And so they appreciated my candor. Um, but it might be time to ask them to come and say, really, other than the swampy mess, what are you offering the Duval residents? So I can do that. I can reach out and ask for them to come to a council meeting.
Great.
Thank you.
Uh, so that sort of brings us to the last discussion item. Uh, we have some time, we can pull in the, uh,
I can do the report.
Reports. And so, um, since the mayor's not here, we'll move right on to the city administrators' report.
Right. Well, good evening, Cynthia McNapp, city administrator. Um, for the record and for members of the community who are here at the meeting, um, once we pull this up, we'll start with, uh, uh, the public works update from Director Landeshevsky.
All right. Good evening again, staff council, citizen Steve Landeshevsky, Pub Works. A quick note on the topic we just included, King County Park Levy map, it's not in any activity planned in the general city region. So the twenty twenty-six, the twenty thirty-one levy is, the, the draft is set. So I know we can still make, you know, calls and trades and whatnot, but, um, that can stay. Good idea.
It'd be useful to have them here, to hear what folks have to say about that twenty twenty-six thirty-one map.
Other pockets of money too.
Yeah.
Uh, so just the update. So Hub Works for recruiting, recruiting for a Hub Works meeting. At one, we had a, a control move, so now our position is open and posted. We also put our, our seasonal, uh, advertisements this week and we are working on, I know it is on handshake for the colleges, but our summer engineer intern will grow up there. Uh, the N P D E S, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, public hearing is coming to the next meeting. So that will be, uh, a brief, uh, hearing and it is on the city swamp water pollution prevention program. Um, mountain bike is on the touch point here as we go forward. We have staff meeting. I think we were at the last council meeting, I reported the mountain bike group. Uh, in between now and then, we met with the internal development view team at the city. So we had just spitballed like, is the project, would like a project, what would it look like, what would the time might be? So, um, certainly it's city land, who's the applicant? Great question. A lot of questions, more than answers came out of that, but we're going to be with our environmental consultant to, to tease out what sort of environmental paperwork and costs that would probably trigger, no matter who was applying for the, the project in the woods there. Um, so I'm meeting with them on Thursday just to keep the conversation occurring. Uh, next thing, if you didn't notice today, they wrapped up, uh, the strip we swabs on the Sherre meeting main as well as um, rain and main. The record reflective, plus she pekans are all set. Now we can have washed out, uh, by them all. Uh, through Avenue, if you ever walk through there, it's, it's tidying up very nicely. Um, there's, um, four slides coming, which I'm not quite talking at, but uh, so that's wrapping up, waiting on more landscape planning and then tree lights and they're putting together the railing today. So that looks great. Um, overlay for the summer will go out next week. It has the third avenue R R F Bs at the Rock Block at Cherry Valley Road, Cherry Valley Elementary and for Avenue, it's about one sixty-third. We are mostly grant funded for that. We also are grant funded for the Big Rock, uh, overlay between two seventy-fifth and two seventy-ninth. And then depending on funding, we put the northeast one forty-fourth, uh, alignment there, one fiftieth through Baton Road is, uh, as everybody would probably agree, uh, really good road. So that one is on there to, to tease out since we've done so well with grants through the T B D program and transportation benefit districts, uh, two tenths of a cent sales tax running, two, two tenths of a percent, not cent, um, sales tax running. So we're going to add that, um, a, a as well. So next line. Took a couple of update pictures on Third Avenue from today. So the railing is on the bottom left of that looking east. And then also looking a little further east, there was a deer enjoying the fresh. Plantings. So planning, we're already down one plant. So.
Not too bad. I know when we were walking from a meeting, I, some of the striping was coming up after the snow event, um, was that ever deemed to be like, um, I'm assuming it got reinstalled, but was that just from the, the sand salt, that kind of thing on two oh three? Do you know what I'm talking about? Cause some of the striping had come up.
Oh, the, that was just temporary.
That was just temporary. Okay.
I thought you were, you were asking about the, uh, locate, who's the thing, locate colors of red and orange.
Oh, no.
Off that, but I'm pretty sure you're.
No.
Between Fox Hall and, uh, one of the neighborhoods, uh, Derek Park, and they were spraying locate marks on smell. Seen a lot of things that may be, that's one of the other things I've seen.
That might work.
So.
No.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to extend my appreciation to Public Works. I heard when I was watching the, um, school board meeting
that the FFA club is set to do some plantings, I think at the welcome. The Duval welcome sign, plant the bulbs. So thank you for coordinating that. I'll be excited to see that kind of rejuvenated.
Yeah, uh, that's Thomas, the horticulture and shop teacher, so they did uh, bold planting at the entrances. I think they had enough for all three. Whatever he asked for in bulbs, I provided. So everything he wanted, he got. And then they are, we, we're prepped and ready for them to build the
Thank you.
And he says he's got some kids hopefully for seasonal games. He's a good resource and he's a good, so we always have that.
Any other questions? Catch me later.
One last, um, it just occurred to me, have we made any, I know you have a million things on your plate, but any progress towards uh, the upgrades to the concession stand? I know that that was on, I think last year's last budget. And I'm not sure where we're at with that, or if anyone has actually rented the concession stand. I'm a little worried about our pricing. Might dissuade people from using it anyway.
So yes, um, no reservation to Aurora. But the window change hour is done.
Okay.
So that is the, we're finishing up the front shelf uh, just Monday or Tuesday.
Have you had any feedback about why people aren't renting it or?
I don't want to be. Yeah, I don't know. People don't do a lot outside anymore. No, hopefully we can, we will offer the users like a tour, double check it, not better for them. I mean, the window before was super cumbersome.
It was terrible.
So this is a lot better. It opens and then the awning kind of flips up in front of it. So it's a little more kind of welcoming. Um, but yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That's great that it got that. I appreciate it.
Pure speculation, just my perspective volunteering in the middle school and high school is everyone is hurting volunteers right now for concessions, student stores, all of that. It's just a lot of people and maybe rightfully so are taking mental health breaks for not volunteering quite as much. So I think purely from the perspective of getting people in there to work it, um, to raise money. I mean, that's just, that's been a big setback for everybody right now.
And so just staying on that theme, and this is more sort of a follow up question. Obviously there's a lot of word of mouth within the sports leagues. I'm assuming they're aware that the changes have taken place. Do you need to sort of communicate that out?
No, we'll communicate it. They knew it was coming, they thought that was done.
You know? Can't work the, the volunteering is a harder problem.
Um, turning it over to Director Thomas to do the community development update.
Uh, good evening, uh, council and members of the community. I see more people coming in. Uh, so uh, this month, just because we're getting so tight within our building out of our neighborhood. We're watching developments like cleanup and we're focusing on that um, once a week and we call it tidy Friday. So you can see from that picture that would have been a failure for that particular developer. So we actually um, have canceled um, inspections three times in the last two weeks for full twenty four hours to try and get, get them into compliance. Um, that February building permit data, we issued twelve single family permit. Um, we have twelve ready for pickup and we have twenty seven permits under review and we have issued thirty seven miscellaneous permits in February and we completed two hundred and fif- two hundred and fourteen inspections. I wanted to give out a huge shout out to James Lee, who is both our senior inspector and our senior plans review examiner. He was in class all last week and took a certification, so a test to be an ADA um, reviewer and that uh, the hardest test uh, for a plan reviewer to pass. That's a really big, really big um, deal. Um, not all building officials and then examiners actually have that certifications. So tomorrow will be general celebration at our weekly meeting. Uh, we have quite a bit of train. This is like the training time of year for like building and planning is when all of our associations and stuff set up the training. So next week, our building department has the Washington Association of Building Officials training. And then right behind that, Planning Association of Washington. So we'll have one planner go to that training. Uh, we did attend the county uh, wildfire prevention planning. So Luke Eckert, our emergency management coordinator and I, and I go to those meetings. Uh, in your packet, I actually provided the presentation from that meeting. But I want to kind of just point out that YouTube video that was, it actually was created a couple of years ago is really good and talks about um, Western Washington fires and what they look like. Just so that we can all start to prepare for that. Well, we might consider um, putting it out to the community as well. I want, I want to have our administrator watch it just to make sure it's not too scary for our community too. Cause you don't want to scare people. You want to provide information and education. We've had a lot of meetings the last couple of weeks, like meetings are in the air. Um, so we also, I have the E T P meeting, uh, planning directors meeting, a watershed forum meeting, a K four C meeting. And we did finish our WCI cybersecurity audit. Um, and thank goodness we have IT because they were super helpful in helping us um, fill out the uh, the long questionnaire, set up almost seventy questions. Um, and so I think we'll actually do really good on that and get um, pretty good marks for that. And that will then help WCIA go out and procure cybersecurity insurance that all of the cities can take advantage of. Uh, so yay, we have another podcast up and going. It's for the housing action plan and we just put it live uh, yesterday. We'll be getting it on our city website tomorrow. So we're super excited about that. I think that was um, our senior planner, uh, Naomi. I think that was her favorite podcast to work on because that is where her passion is, is in housing. Uh, we are preparing for the transportation plan hearing on four one. Um, we're also uh, preparing for our joint funding commission and city council work session on three nineteen. Um, we kicked off this evening, the permit processing with just having a basic discussion of what is, what are we going to be doing with that policy? Uh, we're also preparing, and this will come to your three eighteen meeting, the first draft of your um, ADU policy. That is also one of those statutory requirements. Um, and then we'll also be bringing forward um, the sign code policy update next meeting.
Any questions for Director Thomas?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, um, so city hall update and all the other departments that are working on amazing things. So first thing, we're continuing with a lot of legislative activities. It's been a very active legislation, legislative session. Um, every time I find um, or we're sent an opportunity to sign in on something. I'm trying to keep up with making sure that I'm getting things out to council for any sign on opportunities. Um, what we're seeing now is not just the A W C opportunities to sign, sign on or write to your legislators, but also other organizations asking for support with some of the federal issues that are going on. So I'll continue to send those out. Um, it is a lot to keep up with, like what bills are dropping, what bills are continuing to move forward. Um, our lobbyist is writing a very nice summary every Sunday, which I'm trying to send out on Monday morning. It is a little more readable than the A W C bill tracker. And it's a little more narrative and offers, you know, a little bit of, you know, flavor and complexity adds some of the media that's been coming out on some of the topics. So I'll continue to do that. Um, we had a really successful, in my mind, city action days um, with working with our legislators on getting um, I think issues in front of them and also some uh, remedy for some of the things that were on the legislative agenda. We um, and kudos to uh, our lobbyists. They schedule meetings with both the twelfth and the forty fifth, which really gave us an opportunity to talk to a lot of people about a lot of things um, that are important to Duval. So it was great. Uh, this week or this weekend and next week, a group of us are going to be in Washington DC for the National League of Cities meeting. Uh, there is a Washington State meeting with Senators uh, Kentwell and Murray scheduled, the A W C scheduled, and then we're also uh, arranging time to meet with the federal lobbyists while we're out there. I got an email back this evening. Um, so more to come on that. And then we're also, the federal lobbyists are still investigating grant and funding opportunities. We think we have a pretty good possibility for a national endowment of the arts um, grant. Uh, as well as some transportation funding for Third Avenue. So we're looking to uh, go to DC potentially in May for that. Um, for a series of meetings to get um, some of those things funded. Uh, the mayor and I will be attending the Chamber of Commerce meeting this Thursday. The mayor will be giving a state of the city uh, presentation and I will be giving a very short, small presentation on special events, uh, sponsorship, opportunities to donate and the kind of events that we have going on in the city. Um, we have the opportunity to apply for a T-Mobile grant. It is for up to fifty thousand dollars for communities with fifty thousand residents and under. It's called the hometown grant. Um, there are a lot of small cities that have gotten this grant. It's mainly to do placemaking or create kind of civic communities. So around plazas, outdoor dining, park enhancements. So we're coming up with um, a bunch of different ideas right now. That grant is uh, due, the application is due March thirty first. We did in the Washington Tourism Grant that we applied for. Um, as part of the package of that grant, I asked for uh, movie equipment. Uh, so we can do outdoor movies. If we don't get the Washington Tourism Grant, there's an opportunity to use this grant to uh, go out for that funding. So more to come on that. Uh, we will have an idea or a package of ideas ready for the next council meeting. Cause we'll need to present that to council at the next council meeting to give me time to apply for it by March thirty first. Um, let's see what else. Uh, the community events coordinator Rita Moreno and I um, represented the city of Duval. We are still the only two people from Duval at that meeting. Uh, so last week we did um, all day on February twenty fifth, which was destination stewardship about how you manage traffic and the impacts of visitors to your community. It was extremely interesting. Um, really good presentations that are being brought into this workshop. You know, we had Zion and New Zealand and um, a group from Montana around tourism for some of these very popular places and how you manage tourism in a sustainable and respectful way. Uh, the twenty sixth was visitor management of outdoor recreation. So how do you create opportunities for outdoor recreation? But also manage the impacts, which of course is becoming more of an issue as we'll have fewer federal um, employees managing that and a lot of concern at that meeting around trailhead ambassadors or lack thereof and folks um, able this year to take care of our trails this summer. The next session is on March eighteenth. It's cultural tourism and creating a sense of place. So uh, please encourage Duval folks to attend that meeting. It's the, the experience of this workshop is great. The facilitators are fantastic. But more, I would say the quality of the people that are being invited to present at these sessions are really high caliber and you can learn a lot from them. Um, and then finally I have a meeting scheduled on March twenty sixth with the Snoqualmie tribe to discuss park signs in the Shitsey um, for some of our new parks that can be easily translated into uh, native languages as well as um, the tribe's consultation process that they would like to see for any mountain bike um, uh, trails uh, within the city in our open space. Next slide. So I wanted to give you a preview. We are putting together the spring and summer events guide. This is the front page of it. Uh, we're really excited. We should have this out by the end of the month and uh, hopefully lots of our nonprofits contributing to it to give us a full uh, guide of all the activities that are going to happen, both from the city, but also from our nonprofits. So excited to bring that back. And then finally, next slide, uh, we finally put together our Holly celebration or Holy celebration. It's going to be March twenty second at the Depot Park from one to four. Uh, our, the group that we're collaborating with met uh, Rita at Depot Park. They're really excited. They're bringing educational material about what holy is. They're going to have dancers. We're going to have food. We're going to have tea. We're going to have a DJ. And we're going to have colors um, thrown um, for uh, the celebration of spring for that event. So really excited that we're bringing that event to the city of Duval. And we have one legislator who I'm going to invite because I personally told her that we were throwing holly and she said, in Duval? And I said, yes, in Duval. So. And uh, that's it. Happy to answer any questions.
I'll remember now.
Yeah, I have a question about the sponsorship. Um, when I reviewed, I think it was in a written report, um, the sponsorship opportunities, it looked like a lot of them were pretty high dollar, like the kind you'd see if someone was a, you know, a sponsor of one of our larger events. Do we have any smaller sponsorships? Uh, you know, um, like obviously, you know, there would be a big difference between sponsoring, you know, one of our larger events versus, you know, maybe just a movie night at, you know, the uh, Duval Historical Center. You know what I mean? It seemed like it was more of a one size fits all. You know, here's the three levels. Versus, you know, some events are so much smaller. There might be opportunities for smaller businesses um, that don't have that large dollar amount.
Um, so two things. One, there is, I think a section that says we can create whatever sponsorship opportunity we want for some smaller event. So there's language on it. Um, but we did, I think there is a lower tier. I want to, I, I don't have the um, flyer up right now though. I could go to the website and find it because it's on the website.
I think it was that it didn't distinguish between an event that might bring a thousand people and an event that might only bring a hundred people. Obviously you wouldn't expect someone to pay as much to be a sponsor of a much smaller event. And so just a, an idea that if you want to be the lead sponsor for something, if it's a very small emerging event, you know, obviously you'd think the sponsorship would be less.
Um, one second, let me bring up the uh, the flyer. The flyer is on our website. So we have movies in the park, summer stage, light up Duval, Earth and Arbor Day. And then we have the New Year's Eve Celebration World Photography Day and Beat the Heat. So if you look, um, so we have presenting sponsor, gold sponsor, silver sponsor, bronze, and the lowest is fifteen hundred. Um, though we can um, create any kind of sponsorship opportunity that um, it, it's just a function of how much we can fit on a banner and on a brochure. So um, part of the conversation with the um, Chamber of Commerce on Thursday, which is why I'm going, is to talk about sponsorship opportunities for our local businesses. Um, you know, crafting something that matches what they'd be interested, but also um, the ability to donate. Um, some of our businesses might not want to sponsor at a big amount, but might be willing to donate. We could still recognize them and a large donation.
Okay. Yeah, I'm glad that there's some flexibility because like the lead sponsor of summer stage, you know, you would expect would be more than, you know, some of the really small event.
Any question?
Uh, not a really question in common. So uh, I, I think we discussed before in a council meeting, but uh, I believe Chamber of Congress has agreed to allow any council member to attend to represent the council. I will be attending on Thursday. But uh, going forward, if uh, I can't attend, I will try to remember to uh, run into the council head time so someone else can if they, if they choose to. Uh, frankly, I've missed out on a lot of meetings, this, along with chamber meetings this last year because of conflicts and uh, we uh, I think there's some good that we can do by having a council member there for nearly every uh, chamber meeting they have.
They've also allowed for the flexibility of more than one staff. So not every single staff member has to be a member of the chamber for a staff member to attend the chamber meeting, which is what we were experiencing before is we could only have, each of us would have had to have our own membership if we wanted to attend the meetings. So.
Yeah.
Um, so it's great. So uh, Director Thomas went last month. I'll go this month. Uh, Rita is planning on going, so we'll be able to have far more city representation at the um, chamber meetings.
Right. With that, uh, call the council hall to close at six fifteen nine PM. Um, give folks five minute break and we'll be back seven oh five. Um, give folks five minute break and we'll be back seven oh five.
It's still.
It's being very.
We call the Duval City Council Meeting for March fourth, two thousand twenty five to order at seven oh five PM. All right, we all stand for it.
Much allegiance to the people of the United States of America and the Republic of the United States. One nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
And then sort, could you call the all?
Certainly.
Mayor Oberlander?
Mayor Ploton Mercer, here.
Mr. Shaker, here.
Mr. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Supple?
Mr. Dufflin?
Here.
Mr. Stupel?
Here.
We, um, council member Supple indicated he had a medical conflict, so, um, we need to take a motion, I can't remember on that one, to excuse him or just note it for the record. And so are there, uh, any additions or corrections to the agenda? Which is very.
I, I think we don't need to motion, but if there are no objections, we would add that excusal to the.
Yes.
Sense agenda. Yeah, I think that's it. Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, we have a fairly light agenda this evening. Um, are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none. Uh, we have three proclamations this evening.
Oh, I'll need to adopt.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, skipped right over there. Um, yeah, I was gonna, uh, are, are there any objections? Uh, I'm sorry. Okay, we need to adopt the, the council agenda. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I am.
Opposed? Emotion carries. Keep on thinking we can do that by unanimous consent, but, um, so with that, we have three proclamations. The first one is the development, uh, development, developmental disabilities month. March is recognized as Developmental Disabilities Month, a time to raise awareness and promote the inclusion, empowerment and celebration of individuals with developmental disabilities. And whereas the city of Duval is proud to acknowledge the importance of creating a community that is welcoming, inclusive and supportive of people with developmental disabilities, ensuring they can thrive, contribute and fully participate in all aspects of life. And whereas individuals with deva- developmental disabilities are valued members of our community who contribute to our diversity, enrich our culture and inspire us with their perseverance, talents and resilience. And whereas it is essential that we continue to educate our citizens about the challenges faced by individuals with developmental disabilities and work together to remove barriers to accessibility, inclusion and equal opportunity. And whereas the city of Duval affirms its commitment to fostering an environment where individuals with developmental disabilities are encouraged, supported and empowered to achieve their fullest potential in education, employment, community involvement and independent living. And whereas during Developmental Disabilities Month, we call on the residents of Duval to join in recognizing the importance of inclusion, to celebrate the accomplishment of individuals with developmental disabilities and to work toward a society where all people, regardless of ability, are treated with dignity, respect and equality. Now therefore, I, Amy Akrolander, mayor of the city of Duval, do hereby proclaim March twenty fifth as Developmental Disabilities Month. In the city of Duval, I encourage all residents to learn more about developmental disabilities, support efforts to create an inclusive community and celebrate the achievements and contributions of individuals with developmental disabilities. Amy Akrolander, mayor. Uh, the second proclamation is National Women's History Month. National Women's History Month is a celebration of the vital role women have played in shaping the history of our nation. And the city of Duval, Washington is proud to honor the contributions of women throughout our history. And whereas the theme of National Women's History Month in two thousand twenty five is celebrating women who tell our stories, recognizing the women who have been central to telling the stories of our community, from educators, artists and storytellers to community leaders and activists whose voices have shaped our history. And whereas throughout history, women in Duval and beyond have made remarkable contributions to our local culture, economy and community life, demonstrating resilience, creativity and leadership. And whereas the women of our community have fostered social change, driven innovation and served as role models for future generations, advancing equity, justice and opportunity for all. And whereas in celebration, uh, by celebrating National Women's History Month, we inspire future generations of women and girls to continue the legacy of achievement, community service and leadership that has shaped our nation and the city of Duval. And whereas the city of Duval commits to continue its efforts to create a community where all people, regardless of gender, can thrive, lead and contribute fully to the wellbeing of our shared future. Uh, now therefore I merit, I, Amy Akrolander, mayor of the city of Duval, do hereby proclaim March twenty fifth as Women's History Month. In the city of Duval, I encourage all residents to recognize and celebrate the contributions of women to our community, our state and our nation. Amy Akrolander, mayor. And the last proclamation is Music in Our Schools Month. For forty years, March has been officially designated by National Association of Music Education, NAFME, as Music in Our Schools Month. Me, me, meosim, encouraging, uh, communities across the nation to focus on music education. And whereas music education is part of a well-rounded education for every student as outlined in the Every Student Succeeds Act. And whereas the purpose of this celebration is to raise awareness of the lasting positive impact of music education on the academic, personal and professional growth of our students. And whereas music education shapes the way our students understand themselves and the world around them, allowing for a deep engagement with learning. And whereas music, music in our schools month reminds us that school is where all children should have access to music. And whereas music educators, students and communities throughout King County and the city of Duval demonstrate the importance of quality music education programs to the lives of young people. The city of Duval, along with our music students, educators and communities, joined in a collective celebration of the power of music education. Now therefore, I'm Amy Akrolander, mayor of the city of Duval, do hereby proclaim March twenty fifth as Music in Our Schools Month. In the city of Duval, I encourage all residents to celebrate and acknowledge every day, but especially in March, that music education is an essential part of every student's well-rounded education and to support our local music programs. Amy Akrolander, mayor.
We have, um, the, uh, group here who would like to receive, uh, a copy of the.
Yes. There's someone who should receive that?
Yes.
Do you want a picture of all the council with them or something like that?
Awesome.
Yeah. That would be good. Should we stand over here, you think, or?
There you go. Time to find a good, good backdrop. That's you.
Are we fine here? Should we move this or?
Um, if I stand here, I'll get tied.
Just tell me where to stand.
Oh, do we work?
You want to go out the whole council again?
Oh.
Yay.
I just want to make sure. I'll say.
All right, ready? One, two, three, so multiple angles here. Okay, now I'll get one this way. Uh, there, everyone, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Yeah. You're coming. In like.
Do you need anyone signed up to give comments this evening?
Uh, we do.
Okay. During the designated public commentary period within city council meetings, individuals are allotted a three-minute speaking duration while representatives of organizations may address the council for up to five minutes. Before presenting kindly disclose your full name and city of residence, each speaker and all remarks shall be addressed to the city council as a body and not to individual members of the council or staff. It is strongly advised by the city to submit verbal comments in writing form to expedite subsequent correspondence. Written comments must be received by the city clerk's office by noon on the meeting day, addressed to P O Box thirteen hundred, Duval, Washington, nine eight zero one nine, or deposited at the city hall drop box located at one five five three five Main Street Northeast or by email. Please be aware that the city council's boards and its commissions solely entertain public comments from attendees present at the meeting in person. The council does not accept handouts or printed materials during public commentary sessions. Uh, information intended for the mayor or city council shall be directed to the city clerk who will disseminate it following the submitter's instructions. Upon receipt, the city clerk will receive public comments and subsequently furnish them to the city council for the relevant board or commission. However, it is important to note that written comments will not be orally presented during a council meeting or applicable board or commission meetings. Any written comments received after the noon deadline for written comments will be shared with the council at the next council meeting as part of the city clerk's report. Uh, and who's up first?
Uh, we have one person, Elijah Jensen.
Hello, um, I'm here to talk about transportation. So, um, along with the Snow Valley Transit, as you know, has been perfect. Um, however, they did get rid of the Monroe Route, which I'm very disappointed in because that kind of helps people get from what A, B, a lot of people work there. So what's happening is people have to get on the two-two Ford to Redmond, then they have to go to Linwood. So it's a big deal. Um, so I think that if you could make a suggestion in that board meeting in Redmond or Bellevue or wherever you are to indeed, uh, go ahead and tell them to consider putting that route back. Um, and, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Nobody else signed up? You should re-invite anybody else.
Yeah, or, oh, sorry. Are there any other, anyone else who would like to, uh, speak up this evening? Not many, thank you. Uh, are there, um, any comments, concerns about the consent agenda from council? Seeing none, um, well, move to adopt via anonymous consent.
Oh, so.
Second.
Uh, and that, uh, we don't have, we worked through most of the scheduled items this evening. The mayor's report and city administrator report were presented during the council of the hall, which leaves council reports. Are there any reports from council? Council member, Napland.
I don't really have a report, but, um, I just wanted to ask, I did not know that, um, the Monroe shuttle was discontinued. I think that was through Snoqualmie Valley Transit. Do we have any additional information about about, uh, uh, you know, where that funding went, if there's a possibility for it to be, um, brought back? About who?
Yeah. Did he mention?
I do not have any further information, but I'm happy to reach out to Amy Biggs and, uh, find out. And then, um, if we could, we did miss a vote on the consent agenda, so we had a motion as second, but, um, for the record, just to make sure that all those things are approved, like payroll and stuff like that. If we could have a, a vote, that'd be great.
Yeah. All in favor?
I'm aye.
Thank you. Opposed? There are none. Motion passes. Okay.
I have a tiny part to that. Um, so I used to be on the Snoqualmie Valley, uh, participation coalition. I think that's, they changed their name at some point. Um, I think I got it right. And so I, um, got more of that local information about the routes of Snoqualmie Valley Transit, um, that were valley specific. And I resigned from that, um, about a year ago, just due to some stuff. And, um, I don't know that anyone got reappointed to that. And so it just reminds me that it would be. And, um, I don't know that anyone got reappointed to that. And so it just reminds me that it would be, it is very crucial to have. Someone from Duval attending that because you do get information that's, you know, definitely more local. Than the Eastside Transportation Partnership that I still attend. So, um, maybe that's something we could. Um, bring up because that is a primary place to advocate for things like. You know, our community, um, cause the Amy Biggs too is. Was the Snow Valley Transit, you know, she attends that and anyway, I just. I don't know if that needs to be put on the agenda or that can just be taken care of, um, by staff.
The affection.
Um, next meeting is on the fourteenth, so we can, that's about that.
Okay.
Snow Valley Valley Mobility Coalition.
I know. I knew it changed the name.
They put cap scores up again.
Okay.
It was another act, another letter in the act, and it's a bit of a T in that.
Okay.
Uh, any other council reports? Councilmember Shaker.
Um, did not really report, but I did have a couple of comments from the, uh. Uh, I believe the whole written reports, which we typically don't discuss, right? Uh, there were a couple, couple of them. First of all, says wild, that's, that could be wild fire protection plan. Uh, that anybody looked at that probably real soon. Um, and the revised land capacity, uh, analysis, uh. There wasn't a significant amount of change from the first time, I guess, the consultant. Uh, talked to us, but there were some updates, uh, on it. It's worth the council's time to read that. Uh, again, there, there's, there's some potential significant impact to Duval. Since, uh, they've identified a, uh, housing deficit, deficit in the book for lower income. Housing is significant housing deficit, uh, for, uh, for Duval. Uh, they do recommend zoning changes and or, uh, land annexations. To account for that, uh, deficit. Uh. There's the ongoing assumption that somehow higher density housing will help, uh, fill that lower income gap. Uh, I have yet to see actually any documentation to that, that effect. But it's something that we as a council need to be aware of. And like I say, that there's, in my opinion, dire consequences for. Duval related to that and the, uh, you know, the other requirements and G M A.
Did I say your council member, Henry?
Yeah, I just wanted to, cause I realized we haven't had a meeting since the action days and, um, so I felt like we talked about it a lot, but not in council. So it was really successful. We had a lot of meeting, um, with, you know, people on both sides of the aisle too, and it was just. Really, really, I mean, I had a good time. We got a lot done and, um, I just highly recommend, I know. I didn't go last year, you know, sometimes you just don't fit in the schedule, but to, for anyone to really consider it, you know, talking about some of these organizations where. It feels like they're bigger city problems or something like that. I mean. Where it really impacts us is those things do get into legislature and if small cities like us don't get involved in these organizations and bring that story to the table. Then we get these parking requirements. That was one of the things that we really advocated heavily for. And they made an amendment for cities under twenty thousand to not, you know, have to deal with that. So, I mean. That's where it is good for us to know what's going on and to be a part of the conversation. Cause if we're not a part of that conversation, it just won't get considered or, you know, it just won't even be brought up. So, um, just wanna again say, I think. As it fits in your schedule, knowing that you can't make everything. And I think that's why all of us as a team. Having seven council members, having staff members that can attend and the mayor. Um, really helps when we can take turns and, and attending different events and get that small city voice on the table. So.
Yeah, I, I, we sort of echo that. I mean, I hadn't attended one before and it was sort of a nice to, uh, I mean, there's a bit of blood handling and, you know, saying low. And it's a very short opportunity to sort of. Interject in the vibe was different a little bit with the various legislature legislators, but I, I think sort of seeing things, you know, evolve in real time. You know, talking to, to the senator and then sort of seeing the outreach and then the connection and, and basically seeing. You know, amendments made in real time on the floor, given it's such a tight working session. I think the other thing that I will. Uh, sort of circle back on is, you know, there was a. I know there's some question about the investment in, in the lobbies, but having the briefings before we met, having, knowing what is moving when. Even navigating the, the hallways, uh. It's a bit of a maze out there, you know, having someone take you along, uh, was super helpful. Um, I also attended the, um, elected, uh, essentials. A W C mentioned that when we were there, that they were running a workshop on Friday. And I hadn't done anything when I came, initially came on to council. So got to sort of attend that, uh, meet some new faces. There were more, so people there, everywhere. Uh, you go now, uh, sort of sharing their opinion, but, but I'll, you know, uh, you know, get a little bit of the, um. Uh, the, the parlor, Jurassic Parliament, um, instruction and other things. So that was again, you know, opportunity to network, but also to get a little bit of. Education, uh, as well. So again, uh, like, like Amy said, I'd strongly encourage. Doesn't always work even if you go for one day. Uh, I, you drove down twice, which was a little bit beyond. First thing in the morning, um, but, uh, badly bad initials. And it, it was great having Cynthia there. So.
Thank you.
Um, and I think that is, uh, our last, um, for this evening. Uh, so with that, um, we'll begin at seven twenty-five P M.